To me, if we did it that way, then it's gonna be done right. It would have to be done right, or it's not gonna be inspected. Or passed inspection. But if the council wants to do it that way, I'm fine with that.
How does the rest of the council feel about that?
Well, what's wrong with the system right now? Is there, there's a box out there? Right?
Let's get Russ in here, Joe, because I think he has the specifics on...
We're gonna get Russ?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, he knows.
Oh, here it is. I have it. Okay. Okay, there are no permits and inspections. All GFCI use...
There's no weatherproof covers on the surface.
GFCI's around the corner. They don't want to get wet.
Talking about the electric service, what needs done to get it to code, basically?
When they said the three-quarter inch PVC has too many holes in conduit, has too many wires in conduit.
Yeah.
In other words, the piping's too small.
The pipe, pipe needs taken out, because they don't, and he also said, I don't know how deep it's buried. I don't know if I put that on there.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, too.
Pipe needs taken out, needs changed, needs new wire run. He punched out some of the holes in the box and covered them with duct tape. So the box, the box needs replaced. Two of the breakers were bad.
Switches are double-pointed circuit pole, too much wire.
Yeah, it just, it needs...
Which raises the question that Linda asked, confusing the electrician, why did he do it so before? And I agree with that, at least from my point of view. Do it very later.
So what Linda suggested, getting RLM out here?
You're happy with the work they've done here for us consistently, correct?
Yeah, local guy, always comes, I call him, and tries to cut us some slack.
And I suggested that we do all of it, get it done as one project.
There's additional work that we've talked about needing to be done. The lighting for the gazebo, enhance the service for out here for the lighting.
The only thing that, we fixed everything else. The only one that's still a problem, for some reason, the lights won't come on. And it's something in the wire. We fixed the tree out front. We took all the, we took all the lights down for the ladies. They're all being repaired or replaced, and we're gonna put them back out.
The electrical service, Lori, you pointed out that the electrical service needs to be...
I think the only thing that needs to be fixed at this point or upgraded is, for some reason, the lights in the gazebo. I think we fixed every, the guys fixed everything the last two weeks.
Lori was looking for something, something else, too. I told her that we'd set up a meeting where we can meet, and so she can explain to you what she's looking for.
Yeah, just tell her to call me.
How about the landkeeping lights around the gazebo, that didn't work? Couple of them did, couple of them didn't.
I don't think they're working now. The guys worked on that stuff over the last two weeks. That was on the list.
Well, if we are gonna have them come out, why don't we have them take a look at it? See if there's anything that they recommend that we take care of when it's finally...
The garden club would pay for...
They said that they would pay for theirs back there. We'll double-check that with Kathy Lind, to be sure on the electric.
Bob fixed the electric out here last month for nothing.
Bob?
Magna.
Okay.
No, I'm fine with all of this. You know, we had several things, and then... I got stirred around a little bit, so the council just wants to move that RLM. I'm fine with that, and I'll tell them, I'll wait till we get it through.
But then with Celebrate Polling and the lights, Bob might have them set?
Well, that's what we're saying here.
That's what they wanted to do?
Yeah, Linda doesn't feel that we should allow them, we should allow them.
No.
But nobody else's voice that, that, Larry is.
Nothing, I mean, nothing, not a personal thing, but the way it was done and how it was done.
I just wanna, I just wanna...
While they had someone else, somebody polling, a celebratory politician, go ahead and use them. But I don't know if they do or not. Given the past work that we've dealt with, I prefer you didn't do it.
And that's fine with me, too, as long as they pass that inspection. Because we don't want more problems on top of problems. Are you, Joe?
Obviously, I would have to inspect it because of liability, obviously.
And do we have permission from the school in writing?
I stopped everything until we had this discussion.
Okay.
I was gonna call Bo Weaver, tell him what we're gonna do. We need some sort of documentation that...
Are you good with that, Anthony? What type of documentation do you feel is what we need from the school?
Well, maybe a resolution for both sides?
Yeah, I would prefer something from the board, that they had it at one of their meetings, and they brought it up, and they had a vote, and it was passed. That's what I would suggest to council. You know, I know, we all know each other around here, our address, Bo, or Larry telling us, so it's okay. But I think to cover them, I wouldn't advise Larry or Bo to do that if I was their council. You know, I would say, go take it to a meeting, we have them every couple of weeks, in a month. And then just, you know, have it passed, and we have time to deal with them. So I would say, just an official board action, that allows us to do that. And then something from the inspector to make sure it's okay.
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to, he said it should have been inspected. So obviously, I would have to contact them, tell them what we're gonna do, tell them who's gonna do it, and you would have to inspect it.
Okay, Russ, you got a permit, then? You gotta get a permit?
Yeah.
And then they follow up and inspect that permit?
Yeah.
Okay, I think this whole thing's been blown out of proportion. Lytle tried to do a good job out here. He's a different sort of guy, but he tried to do a job. He eliminated the extension cords and stuff like that. Okay, so now we don't want him involved, right?
I respect your word, Joe.
Okay, so we're gonna get somebody else? And the organization that you're in is gonna pay the bill?
I'm not in it. I go to meetings.
What do you mean, you're not in it? You're talking for them.
No, I'm not talking for them. I go to the meetings to observe what they're doing, and they insist on the bill. Because I'm a chairman of the group.
Okay, well, okay, but they're gonna pay the bill, right? So, okay, is that okay, Anthony?
I believe so. They were gonna save some money by having Bo do the, Bob do the labor, and now they're gonna save that part of it, and I hope they're okay with that. And I don't think council is being unreasonable and saying, I told Mayor, I've talked about this in the past, that, you know, if I'm part of that organization, I told the mayor, let their conscience beat their gut. Here's how much it's costing us to fix what you, you know, made us incur. Pay us where we think you should pay us. And I would hope that they gave a full amount of that, of that portion, not everything, but, you know, that's what being, you know, the neighbor is supposed to. So I hope they would do that. Go with that.
I just stressed to Greg, and I think he was all mad that we're, it's nothing against Celebratory Polling Committee at all. Because we have nothing against them, we do a great job, and we're happy that they do what they do. And I don't know, I think he took it personally that this happened, and it wasn't meant to be personal. Just one of their members did something that made them more mad, basically, without consulting us.
And actually, if we are doing this, and we're bringing in kind of multiple things that need to be done, I mean, do we really even have to expect that? We're not expecting them to pay for everything, obviously. Or, you know, whatever they're willing to give us towards the project. This is an important thing we know towards our residents. Our residents like the celebration, the Fourth of July, and they like the celebration at Christmas time. And it's been consistent, you know, that they look forward to that. And so we're doing these, you know, repairs and things that need to be done along with it for our residents.
Okay.
I'm ready to get to it.
Good. So, Bill, I'm just gonna proceed as we talk about Greg.
Do we have a vote on it, Anthony?
I don't think so.
And when you were talking about resolutions, you meant a resolution from the school, not that we have to do it?
Right. What you'll have to do whenever we get the data, is vote on, you know, the look. If you want to approve RLM and authorize, you have to do that work.
Do you know Bo, personal?
I don't.
Okay.
I do, Anthony does.
I know Larry.
Would I, I don't know. I could call him. You'll take care of that?
Then I'll take care of the rest of it.
All right, 7:30, please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members.
Mr. Cassette. Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Tony Lemon. Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mrs. Serne.
Here.
Mrs. Yadda.
Here.
For president.
Motion to excuse Mark Sacken. And Bob, too. You look like Bob a little bit, Dick.
You didn't think he was...
I love him.
All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
On your host? Okay, acceptance of minutes from the previous council meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes of August 20th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, notification of meetings and events to the public and the news media, blipper.
Uh, yeah, September 17th at 7 o'clock, or 6:30 before our next council meeting. By the way, Linda?
Mm-hmm.
I will not be there, but I'll, I'll be here for council meeting.
That's blipper meeting?
Yeah, so you guys...
Findings?
Nothing yet. We are gonna be needing a meeting soon, so Mark's not here, Bob's not here, and we'll let him in here. Okay, get that.
Legislation?
None.
Police?
Uh, police met tonight, so not going back.
Streets?
Nothing.
Boards, ARB?
Oh, we meet, we meet a normal meeting before the next, next thing.
Yeah, constantly.
6:30, 6:30 on the, on the, on the, 2017.
ARB?
Uh, we'll be meeting this Thursday, September 5th, 7:00 p.m. here in Hiller's Farm.
Planning?
On Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00. And also, what's the date of the historic preservation meeting?
25th.
November 24th, Tennessee.
We're doing the 18th, or we're doing 25th, planning?
Thought we said the 4th, Tennessee.
I had, what did we say, Mark, remember? For planning, 3rd or 4th Wednesday?
I thought it was 4th, too.
Yeah, I have a... Nothing I care.
This last month, it was 3rd.
Yeah, last month it was 3rd, for some weird reason. Last month was 3rd, but I thought we said 4th. Can you do the 4th or the 3rd, does it matter?
3rd works.
All right, you 3rd, then.
3rd.
That's fine.
Do the 3rd.
Just like, just like Bill said, disregard me. All right, Board of Zoning Appeals?
Nothing.
Uh, Western Reserve Fire District?
Uh, Western Reserve Fire District will have their September meeting on Wednesday, the 11th. And it's, the time has moved to 8:00 p.m.
Forest Board?
Nothing.
And High Memorial? A report from Mayor, a few things. We had talked last meeting, I was here a month ago. There's an open position on the Heim Fund, and I would like to recommend that Kathy Lind fill that position.
Okay.
So you guys can approve or disapprove of that. I got a letter, and I don't know who we should give this to, from the District Board of Health. I guess they, August 6th, they conducted inspection on the wastewater treatment system for the forest. I guess that's the, the restrooms there, by the pavilion?
Yeah.
And they said it was, said, last was inspected by us on February 14th. Septa tag was beyond the recommended guidelines for pumping. To this date, we have not received notification that action was not completed. And they're saying it's been over five years. That is, the last pumping date on their file is March 26th of 2006, which is probably not accurate, but... They say, within 30 days, please have the system pumped, serviced, and provide a copy to our department. So I don't know if that's a blipper, or who that would go to, but this is a report from them. Tag day for the band is coming up on Saturday, September 14th. If they haven't sent me anything, if they want a resolution, but just be aware that that's gonna happen on the 14th. And a 224 update, I talked to the ODOC guys, they're in my building, obviously, and I was joking, if they're almost done. And they said that they will be done probably Friday with the ramp going north on 224, on 680. Yeah, they poured a lot of concrete, they've got the barrier in the middle, so that should be open Friday, or worst case, Monday. Yeah. What is it, 6, 7?
The shape.
6.
Oh, wow.
Yep. So that's gonna be a continuous turning lane, which you'll be able to go on, rather than turning left like you have to do now. So hopefully, free up some congestion for us. And let's get this all out. Will we approve the mayor's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A report from fiscal officer. Okay, I'm circulating the list of bills to be paid. If you would sign that, please. The other issue I would like to discuss with you is in reviewing the codified ordinances. And obviously, I didn't read the whole thing. But there are two sections that I found in there. Section 270 dot 13 on longevity pay, and section 270 dot 16 on personal time. I went back through the paper ordinances. Probably eliminated around 1992 or before. Why these are still in our, you know, I don't know, in the book? So my question is, if we're going to adopt these, should we be looking through them a little bit better to make sure there's nothing else in there that we're adopting that we shouldn't adopt?
Did you discuss that with Anthony?
No, I did not.
Okay. I think we should run that sound to me like we shouldn't adopt them.
Well, Anthony should go through the insider.
My next meeting.
Okay, it's longevity, that was done?
Yes, that's a combination of several bills. Our lighting...
Silvered hall?
No, no, no. The bills are all, you know, green lights, traffic lights.
A non-crew report?
Okay, Nick, is it just the two?
Well...
You can review those by Friday.
I think there might be more.
Well, I don't know. That's all that I found.
What I would say is, if I understand correctly, we're talking about them being in the new codified ordinances that we're carrying?
Yes.
And because they've expired, you said they've expired, the time that they were to be valid has elapsed, or is it...
No, um, this was something that we gave our employees back in the 80s. And then it was eliminated, I believe.
There was an ordinance, there was a subsequent ordinance, ordinance that eliminated that.
Right. And I believe when you guys were on council, that's when it happened.
But then American Republic...
So it's been off since like 92 at least? So...
And they put it in our ordinances?
It was in the last...
Been in there all this time?
Now, it was in the last book, and it's in this book?
Well, legally, it doesn't exist, because it was, there was a motion made, and it was rescinded. So legally, it doesn't exist. Now what we have to do is correct, correct the, the written...
The written record?
The written record, I was trying to think of the journalization that was what I was looking for. And what I think we need to do is, is either simply wipe it out of the ordinances we have, or put a line through them, striking them.
Remember, they're electronic now, too, the website from American Republic. Which they should be able to go in there and just eliminate that.
That part should be easy.
That's the least of our worries, yes.
Yeah, but we need to contact them, make sure they take it out, because it doesn't exist, and we just need to correct our records.
Okay, so the only reason I'm saying this is if we found this...
What else is there?
What else is out there?
Well, that's a good start, I mean, that you found that. And I think the good news is that all the, all the ordinances are, is a journalization of what you do. And if they aren't correct by clerical error, then that doesn't buy into anything.
We're not on the book?
No, no. But we need to take appropriate measure, once we're aware of it, to correct the record, the journalization of what you've done, what would be done as a council. So I would either wipe that out, or just put a line through it, and it would even reflect the ordinance that took it off. And then call the company that put it online, make sure they delete those two from their online services. That should do it.
We'll get it over there tomorrow for the electronic. So anyone here who wrote your books, cross it out.
Sorry.
If you could read from the rest, Anthony.
Still reading about trees.
End of report.
Take a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Anything from the deputy clerk? Um, I received from Attorney General of the White's office, some information about the public records and the sunshine law. So for council, you can pass this one to you, and to Linda, and to Joe, and to Bill. Ohio sunshine law is open government research manual. I know that there was one printed in 2010, and I think 2011. Council gets the discs, myself, and Mr. Serne. And Mr. Secundus, an attorney, definitely don't get the books. Hope I got some. I'm not getting too much, or anything. I know the council has a lot of paper to shuffle, so it might just be easier on the list. Thank you.
Has anything changed?
I'm sure it has. Yours might be 20 years old. But they, you know, I requested those for us, and they, they were nice enough to send them to us, so I wanted to make sure we had them.
I actually have the one from like three years ago, in the book pile.
The last one, the last one I had, had Mark, Mark Danz, named on it.
Oh, wow.
And I think it was 2010, when they actually started putting these, with the CDs and everything out. Remember, you had the yellow car driving around, giving seminars and stuff, and all?
These are great now, so we're lucky to have that, especially as we do our meetings and stuff.
If you could go through this and see if any changes...
So we'll keep one of them handy in the office?
I'm gonna keep mine in my bag, so I don't have to have it.
Where's Mayor?
Yeah, I'll keep it in my office, sure.
End of report. Motion to approve...
What's your title? Deputy clerk.
You haven't spoken in a while. Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Deputy Dunn. Report from zoning administrator, Mr. Sponti.
We talked about the trees already. The only other thing I have for you, Anthony and I, and Paul, have been going back and forth with emails, trying to figure out what we want to do, any requests for some information from, it seems like either the owners of the Walgreens property, or someone who's interested in buying the Walgreens property. At a previous meeting, Attorney Limer had told me not to communicate with these people, and I'm not really sure what to do.
Yeah, you know, at the time, he mentioned that, in his opinion, he didn't think it was a public records request. And when I read the letter, it was from a company that seemed to be wanting to buy Walgreens. And they wanted to make sure that they knew that there were no zoning violations outstanding. They wanted to know the zoning status of what Walgreens area is. And they wanted information from us, which we do have on record. But I read it, and I didn't think it was a zoning, I'm sorry, a records request, a public records request. Since then, I sent another letter, and I think, and I said, they'll figure that out, and sent it over, and they did. You know, it's not asking for an opinion, it's asking for facts as they stand right now in the building. You know, I, I think that we are under the obligation as a public entity, whenever a public records request is made, to comply. And in fact, if you look through here, you'll see, I bet, that there's great leeway given to the requister on how they make their... It doesn't have to be exactly in certain form, it just has to be a general request. And I think even it can be oral kind, this is a written request. So my, my, I'm leaning towards saying we probably should comply with that, but, but I would say maybe prepare an answer, let me look at it first, to make sure there's, because they give you a letter to fill out, basically, that there's so many spots available for parking, and there's so many, you know, different things that are listed. And then you have to talk about it, and I think we probably should comply with it at some point, although there's gonna be a specific time to do that. Okay. Yeah, if you, you don't have to go and create the information. If you have it somewhere, then, then you, then you retrieve it. If you don't have it, you don't have to create the information they require. So they're asking you to, to count, or for exact counting of, you know, the parking spaces, and we don't have an exact counting. You don't have to do that.
I don't have any of that, to be honest with you.
In a zoning records?
Probably. Probably.
So I would say, you know, to do your due diligence, to look, to find out what you can, and then let me see it. And then, then we'll talk about complying with it.
Okay.
Because they would, they can then go to a judge.
Who's requesting this information?
It's, it's a company who, who's doing due diligence for an entity that wants to buy, it seems, Walgreens. And they're trying to verify certain information about Walgreens, that there are no outstanding zoning violations, how many parking spaces they have, different information that a potential buyer, I think, would want to know.
I mean, I can say right now, they're looking for the size of the land, they're looking for floor area ratios, they're looking for setbacks, they're looking for height of improvements, and minimum number of parking spaces required.
That sounds, that sounds pretty cool.
It isn't. I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer to floor area ratios.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily know the size of the land. I know what the setback requirements are. I have no idea what the height of their improvements are. And the minimum number of parking spaces required, I do know that.
You might want to harm yourself with the agreement between Walgreens and Board of Zoning Appeals, because there were a lot, there's a lot of information in there, and extra detail on special things that were, that were required.
Where would I find them, Bill?
Dick, do you have the agreement? Do you know where the agreement between Walgreens and Board of Zoning Appeals is?
I, it should be up in the files.
Okay. Okay. That was pretty extensive.
Okay, I'm gonna brush up on it as we talk. Thank you.
Question, question, I've always wondered, it was the street trees on, perhaps 224 and Main Street. The street trees would be the, on, on the village property, on the rideaway. And a lot of those things have been paid for, put up by, some of them even been installed by whoever the person was that resided there, that business was there. But I could just see, see coming up sometime, a difference in opinion as to who is responsible for cutting them down with their bad. And I never got into it, but it, it's difficult. We, I doubt if I, if we have a specific tree, who, who did what when, what and when. So at some point in time, you know, the people in the residential area, of course, the owner of the property in question is responsible for doing whatever. But he can't cut it down criminally or anything without, I assume he's, he'll be responsible for this as well. But anyway, and then I get the arbiters to come out, and I don't believe, I got to say, I just sent them, because I knew the guy had, had gone to, not union. And anyway, anyway, so at some point in time, that, it's not a major, major issue right now, but the several where people had requested that a tree come down, or change, or something like that. It didn't pose any particular problem, and people agreed with him. If a tree had to be cut down, why, then he, whether anybody, you could get this... If the tree had to be cut down, why, then he could go to anybody, he could get this person, or he could go to anybody wanting to do it, just like the others, get the cheapest one to go. But that way, I feel that if, if there's any, any question, you have your arborists come out, you get his report, you've got a report on him, which I don't have the, I am still trying to locate, but it's village or private property. It, it's, it's a difficult thing to do.
Are there some problem trees on Walgreens property? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, no, I'm not talking about anybody.
Oh, okay.
But the ones, some on the post office, according to Master Hannah, those trees were out there in progress. That's, okay. Who's responsible for it? Say it.
Is that part of the settlement report? Are you still got them?
Bill, wasn't the minutes from all of those boards that handled all those issues that came through, zoning board of appeals, if you know what the time period is, the timeframe, those minutes points of all their meetings would probably help some.
I think, I think what Mr. Limer was saying was, that's due diligence on the part of the attorney, to scour the books. I think that was his point. Obviously, he's not here to clarify that, but I think that's what he was getting at, was if they want to do their due diligence, they can come here and look through the books. At least that's the way I interpreted what he said. I could be wrong, but that's what...
But now you have an official records request, is that correct?
Do you have the letter?
Yeah.
Do you want to pass it?
We have a fee.
Reasonable fee, yeah. I'm sorry.
We also have adopted policies for records requests as mandated, which say that once we receive the request, we must respond in writing, just acknowledging receipt, and you know, whatever time it takes for the answer to be put together.
Sure, if I can do that, I'll send them a letter saying, "I got it, and I'm working on it." I'm also gonna let them know that there are gonna be some answers that I, or some questions that I cannot answer. In other words, I don't know the ratio of their square footage to, I don't know how it even does.
That's not our place to do.
That's what I'm getting at.
Actually, you know, the first one I read, you know, they're requesting a zoning letter, so they're not, this is not a public records request, because they're requesting that you make a zoning letter, which you don't have to do. They're not requesting something in our possession, they're requesting a zoning letter for commercial Walgreens, so they want you to generate something for them. And I don't know that you have to do that. What I would do is I would just look at what you can, and say, "Here's, you know, council, my solicitor says I'm not to give a zoning letter, I'm not authorized to do that, but I did try to find out information you want, and here's what I found."
Okay.
Let's see what that does.
And you're saying verbally call them?
Yes.
And that, got it?
Because it does say in here, it says negotiate when you can't do your best.
I'll do my best.
But that's, but that's use.
Thank you.
That's what I was gonna start. It's not a request, record request.
Okay.
That's it? Approved the zoning board's papers report?
Second?
All in favor? Can you oppose?
Report from solicitor. Report from Chief of Police and Street Commissioner.
Or Department of Labor, I think.
What else? Did you look at something for me? This came a few weeks ago, from Dominion, Nick passed it on, Dominion passed it on, and you, have a look at that real quick. See what you got.
Yeah, you're on time.
Okay. No problem signing it? This is a, this is a letter from Dominion, us giving them permission to install...
Underground.
Underground.
They bore underground, they cover everything. In fact, I think they do this as a courtesy, I'm not sure that actually you even have to...
That is right.
It's right, yeah.
So I will hand out sign this as a camera. It's okay with that.
How many tons are we looking for from Salt Pass?
Well, we can get 100 tons like that, we just do, same price as last year. Exact same price.
Motion to accept the poison streets report in writing.
Second?
All in favor? Can you oppose?
Report from engineer. Well, I ask everybody before caucus, if you have any projects that you think are worth, let me know by Friday.
What are those for, Joe? What project?
Yeah, well, the state has a grant, and O and N has a committee that allocates the money to the most, they prioritize. And we never got anything last year. When we got money, what we did, Island Drive and County Street, the coverage, that's the last we got.
Is this a state grant?
State grant. Thirty percent match.
Thirty percent match.
You know, one thing that might be nice is, if Gary gave us this information, here's due Friday, do anything.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe Gary could give us a couple months notice, so we can...
I mean, does he think we don't have projects that will...
Well, we went over it. I go over it with them all the time. I can't think of anything. Anybody can think of something?
Terrible court.
Is paving allowed to be submitted, or...
Paving, but it's not really looked at favorably. Hey, there are sidewalks.
Drainage type things, do we have any drainage?
Sewers, they're like sewers, you know, things like that.
I would give a brush and see if there's any...
Yeah, I will. I tend to... And what was that?
Any, any of the sewers.
Yeah. But I thought I'd let everybody know if you had anything in there.
By this Friday?
No, Jeff says by the school.
That's horrible. I had that little stretch front of the school, down by the stadium. Maybe we could do a joint thing with the school district.
College.
No, it was a league between college and Courtney. You know where the buses go and drop the kids off, and the parents pick up, that's always really bad. They just did some work, it was still, still not good.
Right.
And if you throw the school, it might give you a little...
It certainly has the traffic count.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor? Can you oppose? Okay, reports from assiding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
I mentioned to you that I had a call from Lori at National Healthcare. I'm actually gonna attend a seminar over there Thursday morning. They're trying to meet with entities and give us kind of an overall of what's gonna happen with the new healthcare laws. We are gonna be affected by the new healthcare laws, is all that she was able to give me so far. So we want to get as much information as we can on it, and how it's going to affect us. And then the next step would be, she will be talking to all the different healthcare vendors, and getting rates, okay? Because our rates are gonna be affected, we have no numbers yet, of course. Once that happens, finance is gonna have to meet and look at what those changes in rates are gonna be. My understanding is, at this point, that if we can re-sign, some of the companies are allowing re-signing their contracts early, which would be December for us instead of March, then we squeak through another year before we start getting hit. We can kind of postpone the effect of this whole thing. So I'll keep you posted. As soon as I get information, I will pass it on to you and your finance committee.
Motion to approve the finance report?
Second?
All in favor? Can you oppose? Legislation and policy? Nothing. Police and fire?
Nothing.
Street sidewalks and drainage?
No.
Blueprint? Now, reports from boards, planning commission.
We met on the 21st, there was some preliminary discussion about revising our zoning code regarding fences. And we discussed the need to update our plat maps, which are way, way out of date. And you and Will Tink are gonna go to the county engineer, see where they're taking in the plat maps.
No, actually, I did not. I have not done.
Well, I'm just saying...
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I'd love to see it digitized, to be honest with you.
I got a copy of the plat maps from a couple years ago, and they gave charges for them. But they're useless for everyday, everyday work. I mean, because I, I went, when I first started the job, I went over and put pencil and then writing, put in the address as well as the...
But you had a lot.
You started, you started with the plot.
I started the plat map, I got a replacement with an entire bunch. And they were entirely useless. And I'm gonna try, try to get them again, to see what they're, what they are, but...
You might want to look and see that.
Okay.
Yeah. That's it for the county. Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor? Can you oppose? Report of zoning appeals?
Nothing.
Architecture review board?
Nothing.
Forest board?
Nothing.
Hind Memorial?
Nothing.
And Western Reserve Fire District?
Nothing till our meeting next, next week.
Reports of special committees? Communications from residents?
Marion Gillette, out of On Lane. I just wondered if you could give us any more information, the sewer, sewer whatever, the people that we get the sewer from, or sewer service, in their pipelines newsletter spoke of redoing the sewer underneath the forest and in Polton Village, coming from Boardman. And it says it's in the early planning stages, and I just wondered if you know when this might be, or what kind of disruption that would create in the forest or in the community? This must be a major sewer line.
It is. Goes underneath the school area. Okay, there's no action on it right now.
Okay.
I'll keep it informed.
Okay. I just wondered how much disruption there'd be from that.
A lot.
Dave Smith, 320 North Main, now, here for other reasons, but I just wondered, what's an update on the house, on the manor, that's in such bad shape, with the lot and the hole in the ground and... From zoning, I have no update for you. I do know that the previous zoning permit is going, is set to expire? It's set to expire here present month.
The 25th of this month.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to the, you determined that there was, there was a criminal violation there, and we were going to cite him? Whatever happened with that?
I think that...
A nuisance. You called it a nuisance. Yeah, we declared it a nuisance, we voted here and declared it.
And then I think the mayor saw the owner, and he said he was going to do something.
He had some obligations, but he has no...
Workers couldn't do it.
Yeah, and we were waiting, last time, remember.
Yeah, well, he's, nothing's happened.
He's not gonna be able to do anything here in a...
In a matter of 20 days, he won't be able to do anything. It's my opinion at this time, that I will not extend another zoning permit to him. That's my opinion at this time.
The catch with that is, that if we don't extend a zoning permit, then we can't cite him, because he can't do work.
Why don't we cite him now? He's in violation now, criminal code.
That would be my suggestion, recommendation at any at this point.
No, don't forget that I did have the, the health department from the county law there, and they couldn't find any, at the time, couldn't find any violations.
There's misdemeanors in our criminal code. And we determined our violations, and we said we were gonna cite him.
I'll find the section, if you want, right now.
And however we go about sightings.
Yeah, because once the permit runs out, we cannot cite him, because he cannot fix it. So we have to deal with them.
Busy week.
66005.
So if we're aware of it, and we're gonna do what we can to address it. Unfortunately, I just wish we didn't have to, but it's not the point of it. They're obviously gonna close it down on the 25th.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Okay, now, any new business?
Yes, I came up to you, we were talking about the, here's another assignment for you. We were talking about the 25 mile per hour zones, where we can, where we can place 25 mile per hour zone on a state route that goes through residential areas. Can we, can we do that on a state route? Or is there other limitations by the state? I think specifically what we're looking at is, the stretch, right now, 25 miles an hour starts northbound on 170 at Riverside. We're looking at change, moving that up to Nesbit, to slow down the truck traffic through that residential area. I think we were, we were all in agreement that it should be done, but it can be done.
You want to extend it to 25 mile per hour zone? Where do you want it?
We want to, we want to make it extend, started, started at Nesbit rather than at Riverside. Now, that's, that's R1, Zone Residential. They're being state highway, can, can we do that as well? That's the question.
It's a great idea, especially right before you get to that hill.
Coming into that hill, starting with the first light in the villages, in on the green, now it starts at Riverside.
Okay.
Why aren't we permitted, since we're incorporated?
I'll call ODIE, and start with down.
Okay.
How big of an area, how long?
Two lots.
Two lots?
Two blocks.
It's gonna be from, from the end of the green?
Quarter mile. Quarter mile. But that's, that's an area...
That's village limits right there, isn't it? So it's gonna be from village limits.
From village limits, yeah.
All the village.
It's residential, but the truck traffic this morning, you know, the, the big problem is, is when the trucks come in, and they start screeching their brakes to get down to 25 miles an hour, it really disturbs that area with noise and...
It's residential, it should be 25. Okay, pause.
I'll call.
All right. Any other new business? Any old business? All right, motions, ordinances, and resolutions.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Kathy Lynn to the hind front committee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right. Anything else? Okay, second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion that the bills be paid.
All in favor? Aye. Can you oppose? Questions for the news media? More remarks, and then executive? Much by council, Cernick. Chris?
Nothing.
Bill?
Again, I'll, next council meeting, I'll probably be a little late.
Jim?
Nothing.
It's like to say, tomorrow's first day of school, so be careful for your kids. Thank God.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session...
Person.
For person.
Second? Roll call. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yep.
This is Cernick.
Yes.
This is Yash.
Yes.
Okay. Debut today. Should everybody go? I can see you.